And it gives me particular pleasure to welcome our newest trustee, Mr. Charles Shorter.
Thank you.
Who, it's amazing when you read people's names, doesn't register that, oh, that's Charles. I know him quite well. So, welcome to the Board of Trustees of City University. I'm sure you will, and it's been a wonderful experience for me, and I'm sure as it will be for you. So. Our first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of January 7, 2007. May I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The motion carries. Thank you very much. Is Mary Gorman, Chief of Staff to the Puzzles?
Yes.
Thank you, Mary. How are you today? Could you introduce items B.1 through 12, a series of naming resolutions at Baruch College? The resolutions are included in our package, so you just have to do their names. Thank you.
My name is Mary Gorman Heatherington, and I'm here on behalf of President Kathleen Waldron of Baruch College. I appreciate the opportunity to present these 12 facilities namings proposals to you. We're putting forth two computer labs, five classrooms, three conference rooms, and an office. As you can see, 10 of the proposed namings are a result of our fundraising efforts, a majority representing gifts of $100,000 or more. Two others are in honor of home-serving and much-beloved former employees of the college. The 12th on the list is our Career Development Center, the recipient of a historic $5 million grant from the Star Foundation. I will spare you a recounting of the details, you already have before you, but I'm happy to try and answer any questions you might have about these proposals.
Thank you. And Vice Chancellor, would you just let us know which of these are in compliance with the naming resolutions?
Yes. All of the resolutions are in compliance with the naming resolutions, except the one number five for Myrna Chase. Myrna Chase is an outstanding educator and has gotten a Fulbright, a Mellon Scholar, and has won Presidential Excellence Awards three times. In honor of her extraordinary experience and her contributions to the Baruch campus, we are agreed that this is an appropriate naming. That should go forward.
Thank you very much. Any questions? May I have a resolution? Motion for approval, please. Formal? Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The motion carries. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
President Gregory Williams, is he here with us?
And he has Dean Brett.
And Dean Brett Silverstein to introduce item B.13.
City College of New York proposes to open a Charles B. Rangel Center for Public Service. Its mission is to be a national center for increasing diversity in public service through research, through a library, through scholarships and fellowships and internships. And would you like some more details?
I think most of us have had the opportunity to read the resolution. President Williams, would you like to add anything to that?
Well, we're very excited about this opportunity. Congressman Rangel and I have spent a lot of time talking about this. Of course, he is a consummate public servant and has a program in which he is involved in working with students, which is very important for our students, but also will have implications nationally. So, we are immensely excited about this opportunity. Congressman Rangel, of course, will also share his papers, and is allowed to be deposited in his papers, which, of course, covers now well over 30 years span.
Congratulations. May I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The motion carries. Thank you very much. We'll now move to the Chancellor's University Report. Mr. Jack Riley?
Yes. There's the appointment of Charles Jennings to the position of Associate Professor of Public Management at John Jay College of Criminal Justice with a waiver. Professor Jennings had been working at John Jay College for five years, the beginning of his fifth year. He was reappointed with tenure. Then, he resigned because he became First Deputy Commissioner of Public Safety in White Plains, New York. Now, John Jay has the opportunity to hire him again, and they want to hire him with immediate tenure.
Thank you. Yeah, well, that does.
Okay. May I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The motion carries. Thank you very much. And now, you can, Mr. Riley will give us the information items, A.2. G.
Right. The first five are five reappointments with early tenure. The first three are from Baruch, Deborah Balk of School of Public Affairs, J. S. Dayo of Economics and Finance, and Nanda Kumar Statistics/CIS. The last two are Clyde Bellfield of Queens Economics, another Queens one, Leo Theodore Educational Community Programs. Under item F, there is one change there. There it says effective February 1, 2008. Just for the record, it's September 1, 2007. The college didn't send in the requests until a few weeks ago, but it did go back to September 1. This is Michael Feller of Baruch, again, School of Public Affairs, a substitute associate professor. He actually does have a PhD, but it's not in this particular area. It's a PhD in Education and Communication, so they have to ask for a waiver based on his experience. Then, the last one, Leana, it says Synova, City College Biological Sciences. She does have an M.D. degree in her native country, Bulgaria, but she is not licensed here in the United States, so we have to ask for a waiver there.
Thank you. And now, we move on to the Victoria of the Vice Chancellor. Vice Chancellor Waters.
Thank you, Trustee Beal. There are five appointments below the level of Vice President that have been shared with you. There are also three HEO bylaw waivers that are being put forward on the Chancellor's University Report. One of them requires a search waiver.
Do you have the paperwork for that?
I'll get it to you. It's coming around. Those are the executive appointments below the level of Vice President. Now, I want to go into. Next, I'd like to discuss the data that has been presented to you. You'll have in front of you a packet that's quite thick. It represents the Affirmative Action Data Summary Book, which is the very large packet. There is also a three-year comparison report that shows the progress that the university has made from 2005 to 2007. I'd just like to give you a couple of highlights of the data. You'll have an opportunity to peruse it and ask questions at a later time if you so desire. Overall, it's a very positive report. The total workforce of 35,907 is 47 percent minority and 52 percent women. On our ECP, we are 35 percent minority, 42 percent women. That versus national statistics of 17 percent minority and 52 percent at the ECP level. Faculty, we are 30 percent minority versus 17 percent that you would find at the national level for '05, and we are 46 percent female versus 41 percent nationally. So, we're doing very well. If you look at a breakdown by ethnic group, I just wanted to share those with you. On the ECP, blacks are 18 percent, Hispanics 12 percent, with Puerto Ricans, Asians a 5 percent, and Italian-Americans 11 percent. This versus 9 percent nationally for blacks, and 4 percent for Hispanics, and 3 percent for Asians. As you know, in the university, Italian-Americans are a protected group. 11 percent of our ECP are Italian-Americans, and 6 percent are Puerto Ricans. On our faculty, blacks are 12 percent versus national statistics of 5. Hispanics, including Puerto Ricans, are 8 percent. Nationally, you will find them at 3 percent. Asians are 10 percent. Nationally, you find them at 7 percent. Italian-Americans are 6 percent. Puerto Ricans, 2.5 percent. So, overall, we're doing well. Of course, there are always areas that you would like to improve in, and we're going to be working towards that. In our faculty ranks, I just wanted to point out that over the past three years, total faculty have increased by 6 percent. Total minorities grew by 8 percent. And in the Assistant Professor rank, where we saw increases in all areas, total minorities are 11.2 percent as an increase from 2005 to 2007. Women saw a 10.2 percent increase. So, those are just some of the highlights of the data that's before you. One other report that you have there is a workforce assessment that compares the campuses to each other. They are listed in the order of the percentage of minority group members that are found on the campuses, and then there's a separate chart that lists the campuses in the order of their gender representation. So, you have all of that before you. I know it's a lot to digest, so I just wanted to give you a few of the highlights and let you look at it at a later date. Questions?
I have a question. You said that there were, I mean, we haven't, I haven't had a chance to digest this, so, but what are the areas? You said that there are a couple of areas for improvement. What are those areas?
Well, when you look at the workforce assessment, you will note that at some campuses, you will have more of a certain ethnic group or more women than you will at others. And what that does when you look at our entire university, of course, is to make it look like it's all the same, and it's not all the same. So, you'll find that there are differences among the campuses, and this gives the campuses an opportunity to focus on the areas where they feel like they could do better. So, that's one of the things that we'll be looking at.
Can I, I've had the benefit of an independent, a one-on-one briefing, and to be more specific, while I'm very pleased at the progress the university has made, in particular with its new hires, I think if, when you have the opportunity and to look in particular Table Nine, Trustee Barry, you will note that there is wide variance in the minority participation rate, and frankly, the presence of faculty at some campuses tend to overwhelm the absence of them in other campuses. So, while they, if you look at, when we first looked at this chart some two, I guess, two or three years ago, it did not look this strong. I think the improvement we are is that to make sure that the diversity that we experience overall gets down to individual campuses is the area that I've asked Vice Chancellor Waters to continue to update us on.
And we will be paying close attention to that.
I would just like to echo that. Again, I haven't gotten to study the statistics, but clearly, the aggregate figure doesn't tell the real story. And what I would expect to see or hope to see is that at the colleges where there needed to be more improvement than in others, perhaps, hopefully, that we've seen that. Also, in the past at least, the community college faculty diversity figures in aggregate have pulled up the entire university's figures. I mean, we tend, and that's interesting. And also, I think that if we look at the tiering of the university, we tend to see some of the challenges more at the top-tier universities rather than the lower-tier universities. That's important to focus on.
Pursuant to that, does this committee have the confidence that the action plans will be put in place in order to rectify those challenges at the senior colleges?
Well, interestingly, and the next section of our report this evening is a report from Dean Henry Davis, our university dean for recruitment and diversity, who was going to give you an update on some of the actions that he has been able to take over the past, it hasn't quite been six months, maybe it has been six months, and some of the progress that he has been able to make in that time, and share with you some of the actions that have already been put in place. So, maybe that's a nice time to turn over. Oh, I'm sorry. Just one second. Yes.
I have another question. I'm sorry. The tables include, for the faculty, include the substitute and visiting titles. But, well, wait, let me step back. Before I say that, I'd like to congratulate you for this enormous amount of data. That was what I wanted to say first. This is an enormous effort, and I appreciate how much work you and your staff have put into making this. And it's really important for the university to know where it stands. Aside from the legal requirements, it's important that it really does understand where we stand on this critically important issue. Now, to the detail, the substitute and visiting titles. Do you think that the inclusion distorts the overall thrust any, or does it not matter? Because the substitutes and visiting are truly different than the full-time faculty because the substitutes do all disappear from the university after six months, a year, two years at the most.
Unless they are successful in a search and get a regular full-time position.
Yeah, that's a very unless, yeah. So, I know some departments who hire them certainly, but do not really consider them too much for full-time positions. So, what is your feeling on, does it make a difference?
I'd have to pull the data and look at it separately. We haven't done that clearly for this purpose. We're looking at the total that we're working with. But I can certainly pull out the substitutes and visitings and see if it makes a difference.
That would be wonderful, if you could, yeah.
I will do that.
Thank you. Superb.
Dean Davis?
Henry, put on the mic. Let me just say that I think that what has been happening here is certainly positive, and it certainly bodes well when it's laid next to what's going on in predominantly white colleges and universities across the country. I don't think there's any doubt about that, even though there are certain institutions that pull up the numbers in a way that it may look stronger than it may actually be relative to those. I think it's still ahead of the curve in that regard. And that's one of the reasons that when I came here, I began to look at how we could use that diversity to go to another level of mining diversity, that is, taking the positives out of diversity in a way that I think could actually make CUNY a model for the rest of the country in terms of how you actually use numerical diversity or compositional diversity as it's sometime called. So, what I'm going to do is just talk a little bit about the backstory for the Office of Recruitment and Diversity, and then look at our electronic Vita Data Bank, which is what we have used to try to get involved in certain searches, to try and deal with some of the issues that have been raised already. And I also want to do a little commercial so that you will know what we have been doing the last seven or eight months. As a new office, ORD required building from the idea up. We concluded that we needed to have a construct that would foster both recruitment of faculty and the creation of an environment conducive to maximizing the benefits of diversity to the entire university community. Without the aforementioned, we are less likely to produce the broad-based benefits of diversity and to stop what sometimes is a revolving door. And I think that refers to the idea that substitutes sometimes do go in and out of the system. One of the ways of trying to fix that, I think, is to try and develop an environment that will promote them or will develop them and pull from them those who have what it takes to become tenure-track faculty members. And we've tried to do that by bringing to the table a construct we call Inclusive Excellence. Inclusive Excellence is, has been primarily promoted by the Association of American Colleges and Universities. And it is a rather holistic approach to trying to mine diversity, trying to get our arms around the kinds of things that will make this the kind of place that does not, in fact, make it more difficult for people of color to move up the ranks than people who are not of color. And we see some evidence of that as we begin to look at the data. Let me just give you a definition of inclusive excellence for our purposes, and it will be defined as a strategy to create a systemic presence of diversity and its associated elements. It is the complex of processes by which we strive to achieve equity and excellence in all aspects of the university community. So, as I said before, what we're trying to do, first off, is to build from a theory that will hopefully address all of the aspects of making diversity work for everybody in the community. And I think that's very important. And one of the other things that it does is that it recognizes that we're operating in a post-Michigan environment, an environment in which it is in your best interest to try and move diversity forward in a way that clearly demonstrates that not just minorities benefit from it, but the entire institution benefits from it. In terms of what we've been able to accomplish over the course of the last eight months, I've just put some bullet points here. You can look at them. I'll touch on a couple of them. Most recently, I was at Fisk in a meeting with the Associate Provost at Fisk and Executive Vice President at Mahary Medical College and the Provost at Tennessee State University. They've expressed significant interest in developing an exchange program, a faculty exchange program, with us so that we could bring some of their professors here and perhaps send some of our professors there. We're leading presence in the Metro New York Southern Connecticut Higher Education Recruitment Consortium, which is a consortium of 40-plus institutions of higher education in this area that are dedicated to trying to recruit faculty and to make it easier to attract faculty because we'll find a place for their spouses as well. Given the presence that we've been able to establish, a lot of the initiative for this year is focused on diversity. We have managed to get CUNY to be the host for their first conference, Making Excellence Inclusive. It's a conference that has been very well received around the area. We expect that it will be very well-attended. Harvard has signed on as a sponsor. Yale has signed on as a sponsor. Columbia has signed on as a sponsor. The people that we have on the various panels are top people in their fields. The Chancellor's been kind enough to be, to serve on a panel, and he was kind enough to help us to get the Graduate Center so that we could put this conference on at CUNY. So, I think that's going to be a good process, a good initiative to help us to brand ourselves as a progressive institution in the communities that we're going to begin to try to reach out into. We've recruited at six major interdisciplinary conferences. We have spoken about this inclusive excellence concept with a number of presidents and vice chancellors, as well as the University Affirmative Action Committee and the Council of Affirmative Action Officers, number of faculty and staff administrators, and for the most part, the response has been extremely positive and supportive. We've launched a website that is in its infancy, but it does bring together the kinds of things that I think people who are looking for a place to be at where they think they will be comfortable and in a diverse and a productive environment will see the kinds of initiatives and concepts that they feel comfortable with. And it also draws together a large number of activities that have been going on here for quite a while, but because they have been going on in kind of isolation from one another, they don't give the impact that you have when you see them all in one place. And I'm interested in people, when we talk to them out at these conferences, being able to look at the website and see that there is a robust presence for diversity here at City University of New York. We've developed a listserv that now has 1,000 people. We expect that it should have about 10,000 people by the end of the year that are a range of ethnicities and will allow us to access with the click of a button, a large number of people to point out that we have certain vacancies available and things of that nature. We've launched a marketing campaign to brand CUNY and its style of inclusive excellence in selected academic communities. We've hosted the first dialogue on the operational aspects of recruitment with selected provosts, and we've established what we're calling the Electronic Vita Data Bank, which is what I'm going to spend some time talking about in detail because it kind of gives you an idea of what we've done specifically with recruitment, and I think how we can predict that we will move in a very positive direction relative to professors even at the top-tier schools, because I think it demonstrates that we're attracting the kind of professors that have demonstrated over the course of their career that they're successful at the best institutions in the country. And they are attractive here primarily because they want to come to a place where there's a diverse student population. They want to come, I'm finding a number of people who are from New York, who've gone to other institutions, done well, and are now looking to come back to New York. Both graduate students who are just graduating, as well as senior professors who have been tenured and promoted and published and things of that nature. Selling New York is really a relatively easy thing to do. I think the other thing is that makes my job a little easier is that a lot of people don't really know what CUNY is outside of the Northeast. As I go places and begin to talk about CUNY, quite often, they think it's City College of New York. When I talk about the numbers that we serve and the number of campuses that are available and the opportunities that are available, for the most part, it's news to them. But I do think that what I have seen is that there are some areas, when you begin to dig down into the data, you can see that there's some challenges that still exist. If we look at the percentage of university faculty by ethnicity, for example, we see that there's no question that we are ahead of the curve. For example, there's 63.3 percent white professors in the system. When you compare that data to the number, the percentage of students that we serve, we see that there is a discrepancy there, that the number of students that we serve, for example, who are Caucasian is 27.2 percent, but the number of professors that we have is 63.3 percent. And if you look at blacks, you see that the number of professors that we have in terms of people who are black here is 12.3, and the number of students that we serve is 27.1. So, there is some cause for questioning whether or not we can move more in the direction of putting people in the classrooms who look somewhat like the students that they serve. And I wouldn't suggest that students, that the way a professor looks has in and of itself something to do with how well a professor can serve a student population. I think I did a pretty decent job in my career, and for the most part, I always taught at predominantly white institutions. I do think that there is information and data out there that suggests that there's a level of comfort that students achieve when they see people who look like them in increasing numbers. And so, for that reason, I think we can think about how we can improve that. Our hires are actually, from the information that I have, moving at the rate of about 63.3 percent university-wide. What I mean by that is that we have 63, what's important about that, it seems to me, is that if we have 63 percent of, for example, white professors on faculty, and I think we have 64.2, and if you look at page 10, you can see that comparison, but we have 63 percent of the new hires for 2007, then it would suggest that the rate of change is something that we could be concerned with. And you can look at the other areas. You can look at Italians, blacks, Asians, Hispanics, Puerto Ricans, and you can see how the percentage that they represent in fall of 2006 and the percentage that they represent in the hires in the fall of 2007 relate to one another. Some of them have ticked up a little bit, some of them have actually ticked down. And so, those are some of the challenges that we face. We set up the Electronic Vita Data Bank as one of the ways of trying to address the fact that part of, in my view, CUNY's vision at bringing someone in to sit in the seat that I sit in and look at recruitment from a broad-based perspective allows us to coordinate certain types and kinds of activities. And I think that's a good thing because what I can tell, for example, is that we may have a great candidate for a position on one campus, and that it's not easy if that candidate does not fit or does not get the position, to in fact, move that resume to another campus where that candidate might in fact, fit, and we might be able to keep them in the system. So, our Electronic Vita Database is in part an effort to try and address that issue. We've gotten 59 resumes, and we started this around September, so I'd say a We've gotten fifty-nine resumes, and we started this around September, so I'd say over the course of the last four months or so, five months, we have attracted fifty-nine different resumes. Our candidates are in ninety-three searches, system-wide, and they're in approximately twenty-eight percent of the faculty searches in the CUNY system. Thirty-nine of the faculty who have given us, of the people who have given us resumes are faculty. They have an average of fourteen years of teaching, thirty-eight percent are currently employed at top colleges and universities, fifty-one percent graduated from top-tier colleges and universities. They have received numerous awards and honors, including Fulbright Scholar Awards and Teaching Excellence Awards, and they've published a total of three hundred and thirteen articles, books, and book reviews, and seventy-six percent of the books published are by university presses. By all standards that I'm familiar with, those are the kinds of things that excellence among faculty is judged by. And it suggests to me that we have a group of people who are willing to come and look at the opportunities here that are worthy of our serious consideration. To give you a couple of examples, we have people from Duke University, we have people from NYU, we have people from University of Illinois, we have people who have come from University of Iowa, University of Michigan, and have expressed an interest in coming here. And these people are tenured people, these people are people who have been promoted there, so that it would suggest to me that they are viable candidates for the kind of positions that we offer here. We've also gotten resumes that are not just faculty, which suggests that there may be a need for us to spend some time looking at executives and staff as well. And this, on page thirteen, the pie chart there gives you the breakdown for that. We have spread our resumes out across a significant number of campuses. The most went to John Jay, the fewest to Hostos and Mega Evers. One of the things that I think is important too, and one of the reasons that I convened the discussion by provost about the operational aspects of recruiting, is that there are certain things that we are doing that it seems to me makes it more difficult for us to land the people that we want to land. One of them is that our searches take a very long time, and you can see that by the fact that some of these searches started, a significant number of these searches that we're considering now started in September and October, and we are now in February, and sixty-five percent of them could not give us a short list. So that when we asked what has happened to our candidates, a number of people could not, a number of committees could not tell us, the majority of them could not tell us because the process had not moved forward to the point that they had decided who they would interview. So finally, what have we learned? One of the things that we learned that the data is not here, but we're getting an interview out of every two resumes that we send out. I think that that suggests that we're sending out some pretty decent resumes. One point five of every ten resumes that we send out is getting an offer, gives us two, it seems to me, directions that we can go in the future. We can begin to look at how we generate more resumes, and we can begin to at least guesstimate how many offers, how many interviews we will get out of generating that many resumes. And I think that we've also learned that we have highly qualified candidates who are in fact interested in coming to CUNY and considering opportunities that exist here. We plan to begin a university-wide effort to create strategic priorities and initiatives. One of the things that I'm looking forward to is being able to try and bring as much cohesion and coordination as possible to the diversity efforts here at CUNY. We want to refine and expand the electronic database. It's new, all of this is new, the office started, you know, very recently, but we've learned some things and we want to try to put those in the operation so that we can do a better job this semester. Aggressively brand CUNY in additional academic communities, like I say, I think that's very important because I was really surprised at how little people know about what CUNY is really about as you move further and further and further away from New York. And increasingly, we want to inform peer administrators, provosts, presidents, deans where they exist, about what we have to offer so that they will know that there does exist this group of faculty that they can choose from. And that's pretty much it. I'd be happy to answer any questions, but I think we're moving in the right direction.
Dr. Davis, let me congratulate you. You've been in this job for a relatively short time. We just created this office last year, and in a relatively short time, you're having an important impact, and you're doing just the kinds of things that I had hoped that you would do. So I'm delighted by the progress and look forward to you continuing to do the good work that you're doing.
Thank you, Chancellor.
I'd like to echo that, and thank you for this information. I had the advantage of having advanced copies, and I really appreciated the quality of the work that you're doing. And I just had a couple of questions that I wanted to ask the chancellor. I've been on, it seems like I've replaced almost every president in the university, but at least five presidential searches since I've been here, and I'm curious that we can start and finish presidential searches within five months max. And one of the issues that the dean talked about in his report was if you're going after quality people who clearly have other opportunities, are we not putting ourselves at a disadvantage? And I was just curious as to why our searches for faculty take, it appears to me to take longer than the process for presidents. Is that an erroneous assumption, or could you just give me some insight?
I think there are two very, very different issues with respect to faculty, and I've addressed the presidents on this matter, and I've gotten very aggressive with a number of presidents as well. In order to recruit faculty, you have to involve faculty. Faculty are the ones really that should be empowered to go to conferences, should go to campuses, should invite faculty to campuses, and see if the people that they are meeting really first satisfy the requirements of the job, are they trained in the area that we're looking to recruit, and do we welcome these faculty prospects to make them feel comfortable and to feel part of the university? I told the presidents several weeks ago that I was visited by two very distinguished African-American scientists who I had invited to my office for lunch because I wanted to have a very candid conversation with them about the problems that they're having recruiting people of color largely to join the faculty. And they said something very interesting to me, something that I had never truly appreciated. They said that when they bring the faculty that they are looking to hire to campus, oftentimes the recruited individual is just not made to feel as comfortable as these two would like to see. I mentioned this to trustee Barry, I remember we had a conversation about this, something that I'm really very concerned about. It is not just identifying somebody and being able to provide compensation and to be nimble and quick and get before anybody else. Really what seals the deal in so many cases is if the individual in question really feels that they are wanted in this department. And that's an area that we all collectively have to work more on. I think that is something that we have not really done as good a job as we can. The second element, why it takes longer than it does for presidents, is that we have to make investments for faculty, not one or two, possibly three or four, to get on a plane and go to some area of the country and take a hotel room and bring in candidates to interview, and we're not freeing up those dollars as much. Now, I've made those dollars available to many of our campuses, and a number of our campuses haven't done as good a job as I would like to see, and we have told the presidents that there are going to be consequences unless we do this much more appropriately. So we have some challenges here, but when I net-net this out, we really compare magnificently to just about any peer institution I can think about. That gives me some comfort, but it doesn't give me the job that I really want to get done here. We have to take this very, very seriously, and it's not just money, it takes time, it takes real commitment, it takes passion to really do the right thing here. And it's a cultural change, it's going to take some time to really get everybody sort of moving in the right direction. If we don't, it's to our peril. I think we lose much to this system unless we do the kinds of things that you're doing, Dr. Davis, and become part of this team. And that's why, one of the things, the statistic that jumped off your presentation to me was when you said the resumes that you have forwarded to some of these campuses, many of them are turning around as an interview. That to me is a major, major change from what we've seen before. There have been times when we send resumes, people just ignore them. Now they're paying attention, but in addition to paying attention, they have to look this individual in the eye and say, "We want you to be a colleague." And unless we do that next step, we're just not going to be able to close on a lot of the kind of people that we want because we want high quality, we want diversity, and so does a lot of other places, so we're all, you know, working very hard to close the transaction. We have some work to do, but I think we're doing great work.
Just want to comment, like, my experience as a student within the university, I've been here since like thirteen years as an undergrad and now a grad, specifically at Brooklyn College, the only Puerto Rican professor I ever had or professor of Hispanic descent was in the Puerto Rican Studies Department at Brooklyn College. And to be at Brooklyn College and to only be able to see a person of my own race, my own ethnicity specified in one section is very alarming. We see, I looked at the data, and a lot of the Hispanic professors are in, you know, Hostos and BCC, which kind of makes sense because they are a large Hispanic population in those colleges, but, you know, there needs to be more of an activity to increase the faculty within the universities that are lacking. And I think some of it, you hit on the comfort, the comfort of these professors who come. And if you have a department that is white males and you have Hispanic or Black come, how comfortable are the white males making that appeal to come to that department when they see that they may be the only one?
Can I just follow up on that? Because when we had this meeting earlier, the opposite side of that or the continuation of that was the tenure track. And a number of the untenured or professors who were on the way to tenure talked about, because they were the only one, that the students of color tended, they had a lot more mentoring responsibilities than they perceived because of students' comfort with them. That's not to say that majority faculty were not mentoring, but the minority faculty felt that they had a disproportionate amount of mentoring, and it often prevented them from doing the scholarly research and other things that they thought would therefore impede their ability to advance on the tenure track. So I support the chancellor in saying it's not only the comfort zone of getting in the door, but it's the continuation of that as they continue on that tenure track, if we go back to what we found in some of our previous meetings.
It's a lot of learning.
It's a lot of learning.
There's a lot of learning to be done here.
Yes, Chancellor, I've heard you say this before about the comfort level and the faculty on campus making the candidates feel welcome and so forth, and that's certainly true. And I'm sure that the two people that you spoke to from this department gave you their accurate perceptions of why they might have lost candidates. There are many reasons why we lose good candidates here. I would like to, one, recommend perhaps that we bring to this table for future meeting Dr. Dean Savage, who is the head of the UFS Status of the Faculty Committee, because we have been studying this for quite a while, and there are many reasons. You spoke to two people, I'm sure their perceptions were accurate. You speak to other, we have hundreds of departments here and many disciplines, all, you know, from the community colleges all the way up to our most prestigious graduate sectors. And although this is not the forum to say so, the main reason that we do not get the faculty that we always want is not about the way people feel. It has nothing to do with, I mean, obviously you want to feel good, but it's your working conditions, the working environment, from the physical space to everything else, including salary and workload and support for research and so forth. That is a major, major part of this picture that I don't think that we can overlook. And unfortunately, the faculty in the departments don't have all that much control over what they can offer to their recruits. So I, again, I really seriously offer Dean Savage's expertise here because I think we'll hear a lot of different reasons, and hopefully that we can, you know, address them in a more productive way in the future.
You know, Dean Savage's campus is where we have some of the biggest problems in this area. So, and I like him very much, but that's for our chair to make that determination. Let me make it very clear what I have told to the presidents, and the trustees need to know this as well. If there is a candidate that we really are interested in, and it has to do with money because that is, for so many people, a very, very critical component in a decision, whether they come or not, we have intervened on many, many occasions when we're made aware of it, and we have turned the transaction from a loss to one that is closed. So what has to happen, and the presidents now are aware of this, and we've had some sterling successes recently, we have to operate on all different levels, trustee Friedman. Some of the areas that you're mentioning, I'm sorry?
He just promoted me, I'm not a trustee.
Well, I mean, you're a faculty member. Actually, you have the best job in the university, faculty member.
I do, I do.
But very seriously, we have, we will intervene, we have intervened, and we will continue to intervene. The presidents also are on notice through the performance management process, which two years ago, for the first time, we put in, in the evaluations that I do of each president, their success in taking very seriously the issues that we have mandated as a university to really look at diversity in the eye and see if we can, you know, do better than we have before. And if you look at the recent data, this university has done really well, again, to our peers. We have to look at lots and lots of components in the process here, not the least of which is the pools of candidates that we have to factor into this process. But when it comes to money, and we don't have nearly as much money as we would like, when there is a compelling argument that is made to me... when there is a compelling argument that is made to me, there has not been one president that we have not helped to try to close the deal, and we will continue to do that.
Yeah, first of all, I want to commend Dr. Davis for the Inclusive Excellence Report because I think it's a step in the right direction in terms of creating an inclusive environment. And to bring it to the point, there are two issues. One, to bring it to the point, when you look at why individuals are not coming into an institution, there, there are a myriad number of reasons. And I just want to keep it just focused on the diversity piece for the standpoint of this presentation. And I, I would like to ask Dr. Davis, I mean, I think, you know, we could look at Dean Savage's report, have a lot of respect for him, I've known him throughout the years. But I also would like Dr. Davis to look at it from the standpoint of diversity because a lot of it also has to do, not with money, because there are African-American, Hispanic, and Asian professors who have worked in environments which are very, very terrible, but yet they've been attracted there because of some things that happen with the culture that exists. And so I'd like to ask you to take a look at some of the cultural components in addition so that way we can understand the full array of things and then look at this from a fact-based perspective and not just looking at it from, from one particular side. So, so because that, that's something that your office should be looking at, and I'd like to just ask you to, to undertake that if you don't mind.
I appreciate that.
In addition to, to other data. And the other thing is that it would be good, this follows from trustee Ramos's position, I think it's good that you visited the historically black colleges and all. And when I look at the numbers, just eyeballing them, I think that we have a lot of work to do with Hispanics across the board. And so it would be good to see some proactive efforts in that area there too, you know, aligning with Hispanic or oriented faculty and incorporating that piece too, so that way we're being truly inclusive of all of the dimensions of, of diversity, you know, and not just, you know, a limited number.
Could I just say in defense of the office that I, I really did take the low-hanging fruit. I, I have a history and a background and connections with historically black colleges and universities. But we have a very interesting name for the program, Majority Minority Serving Colleges and Universities, specifically so that we would have room to make it clear that what we're trying to do with FIS and Tennessee State and so on and so, we also try to do with Hispanic-serving institutions, Native American and tribal serving institutions and so on. And we have also been active at Lhasa, and we will every day, every year, spend time in each one of those communities trying to develop.
Right. And I know that you just started working on it, but I just want to encourage, you know, your, your proactive and affirmative action in those, those areas also.
I think the question of hiring is the most important question facing this university. Faculty replenishment is the most important thing we have to do in the coming years, and it's, it's wonderful that the chancellor has recognized this and is pushing faculty, full-time faculty, full-time permanent faculty hiring so hard. And I think chancellor, when he described the situation correctly, identified many of the problems that we have in hiring. I'd just like to add a few more that, that we have to be aware of. This is a university, first of all, that didn't do very much hiring for a long time. We have a faculty structure that has many people in my own age group, and then there are more, a lot of people in a very much younger age group. But the, the group in between is fairly sparsely populated because that was, there was a long period when we did very little hiring. Practice makes perfect. If you do hiring consistently every year, every two years, you get to be good at it, you know how to do it. But there are departments in the university that haven't done it very often, including my own, for instance. And those departments are not very good at it necessarily because they just haven't done it. It takes a technique and a routine. At the same time, it's a question of money and resources. We, the UFS asked our constituents on the campuses, "Well, how much do your people get as a budget to hire new people?" And the answers were thousand, two thousand maybe or so. And this is enough to pay how many air trips in? Not too many. And certainly forget about going to meetings to recruit. And I know that the central office has been pushing providing money for this purpose. But col, the colleges have a history of going through very hard times. We have gone through very hard times where we weren't able to hire, and the colleges were concerned that they just had enough money to run the place. And that attitude doesn't go away. If you have money, hold on to it because next year might be a problem. And you better sock it away someplace. And, and so that's, that's an issue. Do hiring groups at the, in the departments, do they have a budget for that? Maybe in some places, but certainly not in others. So these are issues.
Quite frankly, there is a way to do, I mean, you know, we, we're, we have excellent resources in this university, and there, there is a way to research the exact reasons why individuals come and leave, you know, a university. You can, you can research and take a look at a number of different factors, and you can look at money, environment, all of those different things. And I guess I'm, I'm asking us to look at the full range of obstacles, you know, and, and we can do regression analyses, you know, to understand exactly, you know, which factors are causative, you know, to individuals either not being recruited in or leaving out. It's a very simple research model. We have the resources to do it. I'd like to ask us to approach this professionally, just like we approach a number of other areas that we are involved in. And so we just need to get the right resources together to develop the instrumentation and the research indicators to do that.
And I just heard trustee Barry volunteered to help in any way he can to make sure that happens. So I will take that as a, as a, as a, an affirmative action to move forward with that project. And I'm sure all of us are committed to, to seeing this happen because it is, and in a university that has made a significant investment in new faculty in these last several years, I think, and we continue to do that, we want to make sure that we do it in the best way possible for everybody. So again, Dean, thank you very much for your report. As always, it's stimulating conversation and one that we intend to continue as we go forward.
I look forward to it. Thank you.
Vice Chancellor Waters, are there any other agenda items?
There are no other agenda items. But I'd like to just follow up on one point that trustee Barry made about the Hispanic serving institutions. Let us not forget that there is a Puerto Rican initiative under the offices of the Office of Academic Affairs that has actually done a lot of recruiting of Puerto Rican faculty. So that also contributes to our success in that area.
Are there any other questions? Have a motion for adjournment?
Motion.
Second? The second all-in-famous, aye?
Aye.
Thank you very much.